Okay.
Okay, I want to welcome everyone to our October twenty-third, two thousand and seventeen City Council work session. The time now is six oh five. First item on the agenda is discuss proposed ethics policy revision. Mister City Manager.
Thank you, Mister Mayor and Council. Uh, as you know, these are two items that we've talked about, uh, previously in work sessions. Uh, when we had the joint meeting with the EDC board and the council, we kind of hashed out a revision to the ethics policy. So, um, this is what kind of came out of that meeting. So if there are any comments on this either way, um, we'll, we'll take care of it. Or if not, then we'll put it on the next council meeting for an agenda item or action item.
Thank you, sir. I do want to ask, uh, Councilmember Grow because this was originally something he wanted for us to discuss. Uh, Mister Grow, this is, this is what came out of the meeting. Do you have any question, do you have any comments that you would like to add to our discussion? We had with our joint meeting with the EDC, uh, last week or week before?
Yeah, well, actually, we discussed it two weeks ago and then, actually, two weeks ago. It would, because the next Tuesday, we had a joint EDC meeting. Um, well, we hammered out because originally we were talking about a ten-year, um, I guess, restriction on a former council member or EDC member, uh, being able to purchase property. Because the EDC currently owns a bunch of property. And so, as Councilman Fowler said, it's kind of a, a feel-good measure. So people just are, um, you know, have confidence that the people that are serving on these boards are not there for personal gain. And they're just there to serve the citizens of the city. And our EDC happens to be one of the few that actually owns a lot of property in a sense. And so what we came up with, I guess, a nice compromise because most of it is about, um, full disclosure, sun, you know, sunshine on the transactions that are going on. So we came up with a, if, if a member, uh, exits the EDC or the city council after their term is up, uh, and they wish to purchase a piece of property, they have to come before the council, open council through an open session. So they can be questioned about it and, and the history of that piece of property. So I think it's a good compromise. Um, and that requirement for them to come before the council, um, ends two years after their session or after their, after they leave, uh, EDC or city council. So I think it's a good compromise. Uh, that way the citizens are able to view it on TV or be in council session to hear, um, what the transaction is about.
Thank you, sir. Were there any other questions or comments from the council that regarding the, the revision of our ethics policy? Now, uh, Mister City Manager, Mister Lane, uh, in order for this to be adopted, what action needs to be taken? I know this is for discussion tonight, but does this need to come, come back in a form of a resolution? Or how does this need to progress?
Mayor, I'll address that.
Okay.
Uh, this is actually a revision to the ethics ordinance that's in the city code book. So it will require an amendment by ordinance. If the council's in favor of moving forward with this item, then we would bring back an ordinance with this language in it for you to consider at first reading at, uh, your next meeting or whenever you're ready to consider this.
Okay. For, as a general consensus, is that what we want to do is bring it back at the next meeting? The, okay, that's the consensus I'm getting is we'll bring it back and remember have an ordinance in the next council meeting.
Okay, Mayor, the second item was agenda item placement. This was an item that Councilmember Watkins had requested. We spoke briefly about it at the last work session and I know you weren't at the meeting. But, um, we kind of presented some different ideas that different cities did, um, that Wayne provided the information on that. So we, from the discussion, I kind of narrowed it down to, to kind of these four, um, paragraphs, if you will. So if, if all the council members and you mayor want to take a second to read this and see if this is, I know Councilmember Watkins isn't here yet, he's running a little bit late. But see if this is kind of satisfactory with everybody. And again, just like the ethics policy revision, we'll, we'll get this on the next agenda for an action.
Wayne, well, actually, uh, Councilmember Nun, did you have a question first?
No, I just have a comment. Um, Bob Watkins asked me to, uh, talk about this just briefly. Um, he's not going to be able to be here tonight. Um, but he, he just wanted me to say that on, on his, the way he feels is that a mayor, and not necessarily our mayor, just a mayor, who does not have a vote, should not, uh, keep a voting member of the council from placing something on the agenda. And, uh, you know, he even said if there's two people that agree, you know, that it be placed on there, that would be fine. But he just wanted me to, to put in his two cents worth, I guess, from him, since he's not going to be able to be here.
Thank you, Miss Nun.
Thank you.
Uh, Mister Olson, can you refresh my memory on how it currently works? I mean, I'm under the, it's always been my understanding that the council, the maj- a majority of the council can request that an item be placed on the, on the agenda. Is that not, is that not correct?
That is correct, Mayor. One of the, the difficulties of putting items on the agenda and complying with the Open Meetings Act is that if we don't have something posted for discussion, then we're limited on what we can talk about. And if, if we're going to have a majority of the council members want to put an item on the agenda by discussing it outside of a, of a posted meeting, then we may have a violation of the Open Meetings Act that occurs there. And that's an issue. So, uh, one of the ways you can deal with it is as proposed in this policy is you put an item on the agenda, uh, for future agenda items, which is always there. A council member can bring that up and for purposes of just discussing whether or not to bring something back to a future city council agenda, that would be in compliance with the Open Meetings Act. But otherwise, um, unless the council has a policy of allowing fewer than a majority of the council members to request something to be put on the agenda, we risk a violation of the Open Meetings Act and we need to avoid that if we can.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other, uh, Doctor Trong?
Thank you, Mayor. That's mean you say from now on, if I request, put something on agenda, I have to do right here during the council meeting, right? Because the last time I did request one agenda, you know, to put back on the next meeting, I sent an email, that's not correct way to do it.
The last time when you requested the reconsideration of, of that case, uh, that, that raised a lot of issues about, you know, whether, how, how do we go about putting something on a future agenda item? And there was a lot of confusion about whether or not that was sufficient to put something on the agenda. And to clear that up, this policy was developed or proposed, and it may not be with the councils in favor of. But, uh, i- it was discussed that we need a better, clearer procedure.
During the meeting.
Yes, how can something be placed on a future agenda and what's the best way to accomplish that?
Yes, sir. Am I correct if I request during the work session or regular session? Or when, during the meeting? Because the sentence rather say during the council meeting, that's mean right now.
It, it's, it's a good question, yeah. Uh, we, we can certainly post it on the agenda for the work session. If, uh, maybe that's a convenient time to have a discussion about future agenda items and...
Wayne, one of the things we talked about was, is on that second paragraph where it says request under the future agenda items topic. That was something that we talked about, just having that posted on all agendas.
Right.
Uh, going forward, so there'll always be that opportunity for the council to recommend future agenda items. We don't have to, what it keeps us from doing is, you know, posting on the work session or on the agenda. We'll just have a, an ongoing item that says future agenda items where it can be discussed.
Okay. Hi. Uh, Miss Nun, I, I wasn't here at the last meeting and I haven't had a chance to talk to Councilmember Watkins, you know, regarding this. Did he give you any background on where this is coming from? Has this been a problem for him in the last, I guess, three years he's been on the, on the council?
I think it's just a problem that he's encountered not only maybe here, but in other areas. Um, of people that are non-voting members that will not allow certain things like this. Um, he didn't really say. In fact, he just called me from the hospital a while ago, uh, where he's with his wife and asked me to just mention that.
I know that there were a couple of instances, I, I won't go into detail. But when Councilmember Watkins had requested items to be placed on the agenda, and I explained to him those were more administrative, things we can handle off the agenda as opposed to actually being on the agenda. I don't think just everything should be put on the agenda because a lot of things can be handled. Communicating with our city secretary, they can send out a email to everyone, communicating with our city manager. I mean, that's probably where this, maybe where, that may be where this is coming from, I don't know. But I wish you were here to not, to at least speak to that. Uh, Councilmember Fowler.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Uh, on the last paragraph for clarification, so i- is it correct from, from the text that's there? You would, in order if you, if you were in a, uh, when you say prevailing vote, if it were, uh, say a four to three, let's say the council's full and it's a four to three vote, uh, against something, the one individual of the four could ask that it be placed back on, through written, you know, through a written request, be placed back on the agenda? Is that the way that reads? Am I correct in that?
Yeah, and, and Wayne and I had a little bit of discussion about this. And basically, the reason that you would, um, put your request in writing so the rest of the council would know that we were going to discuss that in the past agenda items, um, section of next meeting. So it would just give the council, it's like, um, I believe last time Doctor Trong submitted a written rec- request to put, put it back on the agenda. So it gives that council member an opportunity to say, I want, I'd like it back on the agenda and this is the reason. And then you, what would happen is in the next council meeting, you have the future agenda items topic on there and you would discuss it at that time.
So you would just discuss whether or not it would be placed back on the agenda at the next meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so it doesn't, doesn't, it's not a mandatory replacement on the, on the next agenda? It just, it just allows it the opportunity to be discussed in a non-voting manner? Is that correct?
Well, uh, when you, basically, when you're talking about it on the future agenda items topic, then, um, whatever you come up with, you know, is it a majority of the council? If the majority of the council wants it on the agenda, does it go on? If three of the council, we talked about a couple of different, uh, versions and Wayne can speak a little bit more to that. Because I think there are your cities that have those other ones, but...
Uh, Councilmember Fowler, there's a good questions you're asking. I, I would think that an appropriate procedure would be if you had a council member who voted in the majority for an item and he was willing to reconsider that.
Your mic, I don't think your mic's on, Mister Olson.
It's, it's turned on.
Okay.
Can't hear very well?
No, I couldn't hear you very well.
Okay. Um, if he's in favor of having the council reconsider it, it would make sense to allow him to place it on the next council agenda as an agenda item. But then have the council take a vote on whether or not to reconsider that matter. If the vote was affirmative, then it would come back at a future council meeting for actual action on it. Otherwise, if, if the council's okay with that, you could have any one council member who voted in the majority request something to be placed on the agenda for actual action at the next meeting, even if a majority of the council is not in favor of doing that. But typically, what you would do in a situation like that is if, if, uh, the council is asked to reconsider something, the council is given the opportunity to, to vote on whether they want to reconsider it before it actually goes on the agenda as an agenda item.
Well, and, and I guess that's where I'm trying to make sure for clarification. Because you don't want to get into a situation where someone matters not whether they vote for or against it. You know, I mean, you could, you could, let's just hypothetically say you pass a, an issue four to three and it's passed for a zoning case. Well, then, uh, one of the council members decides, well, I don't really want to do that. Well, you have people that are moving forward with, you know, construction plans and all and that. And then you're going back and somebody brings it up, says, well, I don't think I want to do that. And then it, it turns, you know, it, you have a second reading on a zoning case, but, you know...
There, there are limitations on what you can accomplish with certain actions that are taken. Zoning is one of the difficult ones. And as we were discussing at one of the last meetings, even though the council was considering whether to reconsider that zoning case, uh, that case had to go back through all the zoning procedures, new notices and public hearings and the like. You can't just reconsider something after you've been through that process. Um, so zoning is a particularly difficult situation where reconsideration may not be appropriate. Uh, but other types of council actions on voting on ordinances and the like, uh, those can always be reconsidered. But as a general rule, Councilmember Fowler, as a general rule, when someone is on the, the losing end of the vote, they don't have the right to bring it back. Uh, only someone who's, who was in the majority has the right to ask for it to be reconsidered. Because otherwise, you can always have council members who aren't happy with the result and they want to just keep bringing it up and bringing it up. And it's a general rule of procedure, that's typically not allowed. You got to have somebody who was in the majority request for reconsideration for some reason that some new circumstances came up or they didn't, they didn't, uh, they weren't clear on what the, the vote was. Or there's some, some reason that things are different than they thought when they voted on it. But, uh, you know, that's, that's not a necessity. If the council's comfortable allowing any matter to be reconsidered at the request of any council member, even those who were in the minority, you certainly have that right to adopt the procedure to allow that. But that's, that's a bit unusual.
Well, I, I don't necessarily agree with that. I think this, you know, I just want to make sure that you're not constantly, and I think this is, shouldn't be abused. It should be an infrequent, you know, should be something done very infrequently. Um, but you just want to make sure that if someone does, you know, one of the council members brings it up, that it, that it doesn't immediately go to the agenda, that it goes to a, you know, it's actually heard and, and on a, a future agenda possibility, I guess, is what I'm...
Like a work session type?
Or, or whatever the case. And I think it would be an action, it would be an action of whether or not you actually rehear it or not. That would have to be an action item, is that correct?
That's right.
But you wouldn't take action on the matter itself. And that's the way this policy reads then, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Can I ask, uh, Doctor Trong, I've, go ahead, sir, then I have, then I have a question for the, the council.
I mean, if, uh, I would like to request some agenda to put back on the next meeting. I can't do that. I have to wait until next meeting. I mean, like today, everything done. I went home, I decide to bring one of agenda back, that's mean I have to wait until next meeting to request that?
No.
Because they say it right there on second paragraph, you have to request a future item topic during council meeting. If, do I misunderstand here or...
Well...
How do I do? Because if I send all the email to all council, that mean I violate the, uh, public, I, I mean, the meeting act. Because we have more than five council reading. Am I correct? That's mean, I violate the, uh...
But doesn't it allow for the...
Public meeting act.
For the, doesn't it allow though for a council member with, a council member could go to, to Mayor, say, Mayor Everett currently and say, hey, I have an, an item that I would, you know, like you to consider putting on the agenda. I have an an item that I would, you know, like you to consider putting on the agenda. You could, it it does allow for that then.
Exactly, because there, to speak to your point, Dr. Uh Dr. Trong, there have been times, numerous times. That a council member has contacted me directly and said, I would like to have this item, whatever the item is, placed on the agenda for discussion. I've never turned down a council member with the exception, there has been. Once possibly twice, uh when Councilmember Watkins had asked me to place some items on the agenda, I didn't do it and the reason why is because I felt was things that would. Could be handled administratively, it shouldn't be, and has been handled administratively. You know, I, we were able to do that. Now, certain things that are that are more pressing, absolutely, we put them on there. I haven't turned down any council member that's asked. Uh to have an item placed on the agenda. So I mean, to me, it would be nice if the Councilmember Watkins were here. I understand he can't be tonight, I understand that. But maybe at the next meeting he can speak, you know.
You you mean that, you mean the mayor would have a final decision, yes or no, right?
Well, for majority, well, more than one council member asks for it to be placed on the agenda. I mean, now for me, if you were to come to me. At any time and say, I want this item to be placed on the agenda, I'll put it on there out of respect for you. Depending on what it is, like uh uh Councilmember Fowler and uh. Our legal counsel we're talking about earlier, if it's an agenda that, if it's an item that, a zoning case that we had already passed. And the applicants moving forward with their progress and it's something we may not want to, you know, interfere with because. You know, now we're impacting their time, but if it's our water rates, if it's our. Garbage rates, whatever, things like that, absolutely, we'll we'll put it on there. Does that answer your question?
Yes, but uh you remember the last meeting on October ten. I believe everybody agree, if you want to put something on agenda for future meeting, you have to send the email to Mr. Camacho.
You you can contact me or you can send a note to our city secretary and just say.
Right now, I would like to know which way is correct. Wayne?
Well, can can you give us enlighten us on what?
Right now, which way is correct is, we don't know because we don't have a procedure in place to do it.
Yep.
That's that's why we're attempting to come up with a policy on how it should be done because that that caused a lot of confusion recently. Uh on what is the proper procedure and there were different opinions on what, how it should take place.
Thank you.
Councilmember Fowler, do you still have a question or comment?
Well, I mean, I've. Overall, I've, and I think it looks like a reasonable policy. I mean, I I would think that, you know, any mayor, whether it be Mayor Everett or anyone in the future with. Would have the, you know, the respect to to allow something to be put place on the agenda if a council member asks. Uh. I do like the idea of the future agenda. Uh that opportunity to place something on the agenda, I think it like city manager said, I think that was a good foresight on his part as far as. Having it on every week, that way if something needs to be brought up, it can be brought up at that time and then looked at in the next two weeks or four weeks, whatever the whatever the case may be. But then you always have the option of bringing it, you know, to the mayor and asking the mayor to place it on agenda as long as it's done in a timely manner, so. I mean, I I think it's within reason. I just wanted to make sure on that, you know, you just don't want to get in a situation where someone's bringing something back just continually for. You know, and I think this does pretty much prohibit that, so.
Mayor, I was gonna say the other, uh one of the. Things that Councilmember Watkins and I discussed was, um there was a couple of times where he wanted something put on the agenda for an action item and it was really. Kind of like you alluded to earlier, more appropriate to put in a work session format first. And what a work session allows me to do is basically collect your thoughts as a council and then I can. Kind of what we're doing tonight, I can kind of put this in front of you and say, okay, is this kind of what you're thinking or do you want to change it up? It saves us from having an action item that we can't take action on. So I don't, Wayne, this kind of differentiates between from a work session and an agenda, true. I mean, if we if we want to place, is there wording that we should use to say action item on the agenda to differentiate or? If a council member wants me or the mayor to put something on the work session, can we handle that differently?
I I think we ought to clarify that, that's a good point that you raise. Uh I I read this proposed policy. As allowing a council member at any meeting, let's assume we adopt this policy, then we're going to have on every city council agenda from now on. An item that says future agenda items. And when the mayor gets to that on the agenda, he's going to say, okay, does anybody have any future agenda items they want to discuss tonight? That will allow any council member to say, yeah, I'd like to have an ordinance brought back for this. At that point in time, it would be appropriate for the council to discuss, well, do we want that in the work session or do we want that on as an action item? If it's something real simple, you may want to say just bring it back as an action item. But I think overall, if you're, if you're just putting something on the agenda and you're not sure if the council as a whole is in favor of proceeding that way. Uh it would make sense to stick it on as a work session item and uh talk about it a little bit, find out the pros and cons and whether or not there are some additional issues that need to be ferreted out and then. Bring it back as an action item after that.
Yeah, for the most part, anytime I've put something on there or a council member's asked me to put something on something on there, we've always tried to put it on as a work work session item. You know, sometimes if it's more appropriate, if it's if it's more appropriate, we'll put it on as an action item, depending on where it falls in there, but I always try to. Era and put it on the side of the uh uh work session so we can get, you know, council feedback and then proceed from there, but. Uh Councilmember Fowler, do you have another question or a comment?
No, sir, Mr. Ray.
Okay. So are there any other questions or comments regarding uh regarding this item? Yes, sir, Dr. Trong.
Okay, uh I didn't see in this uh. Proposed about how many time because some other council told me say, for example, I want to put the. The same agenda heard from past meeting back to the future. Uh meeting and they say, well, you can request how many time you want to. Is that correct or no? Or do we have limitation like only one time? For example, like agenda number five, I request to put back on future agenda. I we already heard and some council told me say, yeah, you can put it back as many time you want. Is that correct or no?
Uh for the reconsideration?
Yeah.
No, that typically the reconsideration.
One time?
One time and that's it. Now, under future agenda items, if if you want to bring that up every council meeting, the same item over and over again. If a majority of the council is in favor of it, then it'll go forward. If not, then you just, you're just uh. Making a request that's not going to get approved.
Mayor, I I would like to request put in that sentence and they say, if you request to put back the old agenda. For a future meeting only one time, you know, limitation.
Yeah.
Is everybody okay with that, that addition? Okay, so now what? You have a consensus, what direction do you need from the council just to bring it back at the next meeting in a form, would this be in a form of a resolution or a form of a?
I I think a resolution would be a couple way to go, man.
Resolution, okay. So we'll see this on our next next uh council agenda. So moving on. You said we we don't have an executive session, correct? I thought that's what I.
What we have posted is if there are any questions about any of the lawsuits or any questions, legal questions about the agenda tonight, we can go into executive session, but otherwise I've. I've got nothing to report to you.
Okay. Thank you, sir. So continuing on, um let's see here, we'll go on into our reports, our monthly financial report. Um Ms. Fung. Welcome.
Mayor and the city council. I didn't see the control here. Okay, Mayor and the city council, it's a pleasure to present to you the September monthly financial report. Let's see. Here we go. All right, I'm happy to say that um. This is the report that is the preliminary report that is to say we haven't put in all the year end adjustment and the numbers are not audited. So when we finish the audit, we will give you the actual um actual um number, but these are preliminary. So at the end of September, currently, we have about seventy point nine, almost seventy one million doll- uh dollars of revenue for the city. Which is about ninety nine point something percent of the total year revenue. And the expenditure is at about sixty one million dollars, that's about seventy six percent. So our. Fund balance is about forty million dollars and we budgeted to be at twenty three million dollars. But as I have mentioned, this does not include the year end adjustments. Okay, and the largest fund for the city, the general fund, you can see that the uh revenue about twenty seven million dollars, which is above the budget of twenty six point eight. This is about hundred and two percent and the expenditure so far is about twenty four point eight million dollars, is about ninety two percent. So our fund balance for general fund is about eight point nine million dollars. And for the property tax, you can see that we receive um almost all the property tax, which is about ninety nine, more than ninety nine percent. And then for sales tax, uh I'm really happy to say that we achieve about hundred and. Six point seven percent of the budgeted amount, so we received much more sales tax than we predicted. And you can see that the three-year comparison, of course, this year is much higher than the previous year because the allocation is a little bit different. And comparing to the first nine month using a calendar year basis, the controller's office reported that. We receive about ten point nine percent more than the previous year, which is very good. So are there any question for the financial report?
Thank you, Ms. Fung. Uh Councilmember Fowler.
Can you go back to your first slide, Ms. Fung?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, on your all funds, on your adjustments, that's your year-end adjustment estimates, two million, but if we're running expenditures at seventy six percent.
This does not include the year-end adjustment, like some of the adjustment, we only do it once a year. Like depreciation and all those um that is not in yet.
The which one, amortization?
Amortization, um depreciation, bad debt and all those, it hasn't come in yet.
So uh under all funds then, say any water, bad debt or any of that would would fall under the, would that fall under the adjustments?
Yes.
Okay, but you're still on expenditures, you're still even, you adjustments are going to be taken off as and considered an expenditure, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And also there expenditure that hasn't come in because.
Right.
Um because we have to use the accrual basis, we have to wait two months in order to have all the bills come in.
But what do you forecast that number to be?
Um the forecast from the budget was eighty million dollars. Eighty point eight.
Okay, but on your adjustments, what do you, what do you anticipate? Do you anticipate being higher or lower than two million?
Um the adjustment will be about two million dollars, that is only including the depreciation and. The depreciation, amortization and bad debt.
Okay.
But.
So we still then under under expenditures though, we should still come in. Uh two million, you still should come in as a.
Okay, this amount will change too because there are a lot of bills hasn't come in yet.
Okay.
Besides the adjustment.
So then we're really not going to know.
We don't know, we really don't know until until the auditors, you know, until we put in all the adjustment when all the bills come in. It takes sixty days for those come in and also um that's why the audit can't start until two months after.
So so month in November, we should have a pretty good idea then where we're at with expenditures and adjustments.
November, yes, but that is not including the audit adjustment.
The audit adjustment?
Yes.
Okay.
The audit tell me.
That shouldn't be that that large of a number, then the audit adjustment really shouldn't.
Shouldn't. It shouldn't, but we don't know.
If it is, we have a problem then.
Hmm, maybe, but I'm not anticipating that.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilmember Fowler. Are there any other questions or comments from the council for uh Ms. Fung? Seeing none? Thank you, Ms. Fung.
Okay.
Well, well, moving on to our quarterly investment report for two thousand seventeen, again, Ms. Fung.
Okay, that's why I'm staying here. Okay, all right. Again, I'm happy to report to you the quarterly investment report. As you can see that from the beginning of the quarter to the end of the quarter, we have one point four seven million dollars less for investment. And since the interest rate is increasing, so you can see that our unrealized loss is a little bit more, it's about six point um six thousand dollars more for the. Un- uh unrealized loss and the accrual interest is about eighty five thousand dollars. And our RAM, that is the weighted average maturity and is about four hundred and three days. And you can see the interest rate, our portfolio is earning a little bit more interest and also the six-month, the standard. Which is also increased a little bit. Okay, looking at the um. Different type of investment, you can see the largest again is the agency, those are Fannie Mae, Fedimac, uh federal home loan banks that we we invest in. And then the next will be the um investment pool, we have investment in Texas cars, Texas daily, Texas term. And uh tax pool, so these are our investment pools. And we also have a lot of CDs, which is about four point nine million dollars and we still have one more municipal security and this. Will mature in, I mean, it's already mature in October, so next time you will not see this anymore. So this is our portfolio altogether. Looking at the maturity distribution, you can see that we are very heavy in the one to thirty days. That is to have the money be able to pay all the bills that come due and meet our payroll and expenses and all those. We also invest quite a lot in the two to three years, but as every month we uh the time goes by, this will move up a little bit, so. So this is our uh distribution on the maturity. Okay, looking at the interest rate, you can see the interest rate is increasing every single quarter, you can see. One month is going up, 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 all of them are going up, so. That is to say, if you invest too much, then you will lose the opportunity to earn more interest, so that's why we need to have a balanced portfolio. And looking at the um. Growth domestic product, the GDP, we have the growth rate, it's about three point one percent for the end of uh August. And then looking at the consumer confidence, which is about hundred and four. It's hundred and twenty four, in fact, it's the, it's going right here. So it's still, um if it is above a hundred, that means the consumer confidence and has a positive uh future, positive. Um. Confidence, so it's about hundred and twenty four for the end of August. So that is to say we are predicting we have a better future. Economize. Okay, and then for the unemployment rate for Hottum City, you can see there is three point eight percent, it's pretty low. And the nation Y is about four point four percent, so Hottum City is much lower than the national, so we are doing very well here. So are there any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Fung. Are there any questions for Ms. Fung regarding the quarterly investment report? Okay, seeing none. Excellent presentation, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to to the two thousand seventeen crime statistics for the third quarter, Chief Phillips, welcome, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Um I first want to begin by just kind of laying some groundwork for something I might ask for later. Recently, we've had three major incidents involving shootings. Um. One, three Saturdays ago at Dayton Square, Spanish Square, sorry. Um involved three suspects getting shot and a victim getting shot and one of our officers. Almost getting shot and almost shooting a guy. It was a weapons failure on both of their parts that we're not up here talking about something different. So with that being said, I'm laying the groundwork, if the grants don't pass for body armor, there's, we need to start looking at body armor for. The outer cas- outer vest for the level four carriers for pretty soon if that grant doesn't go through through the state because. The trend with our officers and the violence that they're seeing, along with the fire department that's responding, is increasingly. the trend with our officers and the violence that they're seeing, along with the fire department that's responding, is increasingly getting worse, and they need to be prepared so they can handle their jobs.
Chief, do, do you have an estimate of ballpark, how much that would be?
To fit, outfit all the police officers with level four carriers and helmets, about eighty thousand dollars. Um, we currently have three vests for the fire department, um, we've, we've actually set a trend in Tarrant County for a rescue task force, where the fire department's actually going in into what we consider a warm zone, um, with police officers to, uh, render aid to people that are down. So we'd like to outfit two or three vests per fire apparatus also. Um, like that incident the other day, they, they didn't know how many suspects they initially had, or how many victims they initially had. Fire department made entry with the police department and realized there was, it was a still ongoing situation. And at that time, that fire truck didn't have any vest on it, so they were kind of stuck in there, depending on the officers to cover them, and on top of all the other tasks they were doing.
Quick question, is the, is the, the, uh, equipment for fire, would it be different since they're in, I guess since it's more of an EMS call, or, or would it be the same?
It's the same protection, just different, it looks different, it looks more like their, uh, um, I guess their bunker here, it's got the reflective stuff, says fire rescue on it. Um, it doesn't.
I mean, it's designed more, it's specifically designed for fire then?
The carrier is the plate that actually resists the bullets, or the exact same, it takes multiple hits from a three oh eight.
Okay.
Which is what they were shooting the other night.
Okay, thank you, sorry to interrupt.
Oh, no, you're fine, that's what I was laying the groundwork for. Um, this is a stats for July, August, September, um, again, kind of beating dead horse. Um, UCR does crimes against persons and crimes against property, um, as you can see, what they all cover. We, again, this is a UCR standard, and then what that means is it, it takes a hierarchical rule, so if you have a robbery and then four assaults, when you report it, it's only showing the one robbery, it's discarding all the rest. October first, we went to incident base, so if you have five robberies, you're counting the one robbery, but you're also counting the ag assault on top of it, so you're getting a true reflection of the crime that's occurring in the city. Um, calls for service, this indicates all calls that the officers responded to, traffic stops, suspicious vehicles, anything like that. It's pretty cool to see that it stays pretty much even year to year, with less than one percent change in both. Um, the, uh, part one offenses account for the property crimes and the crimes against persons, as you can see, we had a ten percent rise quarter to quarter, and an eighteen percent rise year to year. No murders, um, rapes, they were up quarter to quarter, and then down, or even year to year. Again, these are, going back through them, they're all gonna be known offenders, um, numerous suspects haven't been arrested, and again, some of them are family members against young children that are also in this category. Robberies went from seven to nine quarter to quarter, but we're pretty much both the same, it's gonna be the same crew that we were working on the last three times we've, um, gone over it. Um, with this, the business burglaries have actually decre, decreased, we've had three business burglaries and then robberies of individuals of six. Um, that could be anything from, you know, two friends get into a fight and one takes a wallet out of their pocket or something, that's considered robbery. It doesn't have to be technically with a gun in a gas station like, you know, it's portrayed in the movies. Out of those nine, we've had three arrests and then two warrants that have been issued, and they're still outstanding, they're still looking for those. The other ones that are unknown are the business burglaries, and most of those are on one twenty-one at the gas stations. Aggravated assaults, again, this is, it's gonna be even higher next quarter, because this, next quarter's gonna include the Dayton Square, or Spanish Square, and then the offense that we had on Sunday also. Same year to year. Burglary of buildings decreased by thirty-six percent, and then eight percent year to year. Burglary of residents, quarter to quarter is down, year to year is actually up. Um, went back and looked at that, um, we've had three arrests out of the burglary of residents, and then eleven suspects, and a majority of them are warrants have already been issued, some of the suspects that were actually arrested are involved in multiple of the burglaries, started linking those together, so I didn't look to see how many of the suspects were actually associated with the burglaries. And then theft, slide up nine, nine percent, and then down overall sixteen percent. Burglary of motor vehicles actually drastically up, it's, um, occurring mainly districts three, which is the middle part of town, district four in the apartments, and then a little bit in district five around the Warren End and Dent Highway and eight twenty area. Um, we've had six arrests, out of those arrests, some of those are gonna be associated with multiple offenses, mainly in the apartment complexes. Um, we have ways of tracking items that they pawn in pawn shops or sell on Craigslist or something like that, and we can actually start tracing people back that way. Um, like I said, six arrests, main things that were taken were tools, weapons, rifles, pistols, stuff like that, and purses. Um, now they're back to breaking windows and opening cars that are unlocked. We've had a rash at Planet Fitness recently, we've actually got, um, good suspect information from a vehicle and a witness and some good camera. So we'll be following up on that, excuse me. Um, most of these offenses occur on Wednesday night, or Wednesday morning, between six in the morning and nine in the morning. Um, sorry, six P M. to nine P M., and then Thursday morning, two A M. to four A M., and then Saturday, three A M. to five A M. This is the main, main part of those offenses. That's just showing the difference from year to year. Vehicle thefts are actually up when you go year to year, um, looked at that also, um, we've again arrested six people, eleven suspects, a bunch of them have warrants already issued, um, s, of those six that were arrested, they're linked to quite a few offenses, mainly the motorcycle thefts that were occurring in the apartment complexes, where they were just backing a truck up and loading the motorcycle on the bed of a truck. Um, this is kind of, I find it shocking to figure out when most of those thefts were occurring, most of them were Friday between eleven A M. and two P M. And then five thirty A M. to seven thirty A M. on Saturday, or Friday morning, and then Tuesday, five P M. to seven P M. And then Monday mornings between nine thirty and eleven A M., so it's kind of different than what I thought, I was always thinking it'd be early morning or late at night. And going back, uh, still the main thing that's being stolen are the Chevy trucks, and that's the majority of the things that are being stolen. Um, there was a couple that tried to get in, and actually tried to get into two vehicles last night, and they actually ended up stealing one and ramming a gate last night, and it was the Chevy truck also. Vandalism slightly up. And then overall, it's up quarter, year to year, again, this is code enforcement actually being out involved, or actually recognizing a bunch of the graffiti. Um, this also can include criminal mischief, broken windows or something like that are all in this category also. The rest, quarter to quarter are down slightly, and then up slightly from year to year. Any questions?
Thank you, Chief Phillips, are any questions for, uh, Chief Phillips, uh, Councilmember Nine, and then Councilmember Fowler.
Thank you for the presentation, um, about how many of these are by minors?
By minors, we, well, there, I didn't look at that, to tell you the truth, um, for the unknown suspects, it, it's really hard to tell.
The graffiti, you re, you really don't know?
No, graffiti's hard to prove, um, we had a guy that was very versed in gangs, and he was able to, when he was here, he's at our auto theft task force now, but he, he was very versed in it, could track gangs, and had the ability to talk to them, and to get who was doing it, and actually got cases filed.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Fowler, then Councilmember Gray.
Two, two questions, chief, the vandalism, you said that's primarily gonna be a code. Or any of the, prim, it's primarily code, since we've increased code, but I mean, that is, falls more typically under a code type scenario, that.
The cleanup, yeah, well, that, yeah, they're the ones, they're the ones that are notifying us, and that's why it's increasing, because we have more people out there looking at it. Whereas opposed to, you know, an officer might not see it at, you know, two in the morning on a wooden fence, somebody sprayed a gang graffiti, or in a park where, you know, code or Parks Department employee's driving around says, hey, this wasn't painted yesterday, now it is, they're, we're able to report it more.
Okay, and then the other, this would be for the quarter ending October one, or September thirtieth, correct? Do you anticipate, uh, cause some of these numbers have gone down drastically, some of them gone up drastically, but do you kind of, is this kind of the year you forecast this, this quarter, I guess, will this be our first quarter of our fiscal year, but is it typically see during the holidays and the, and the, the warm-up car thefts and things like that? Should we anticipate them to stay up, or has, since you caught some of the individuals, will they potentially go down?
Unfortunately, we work with the human population, so it's hard to predict, but, and I was told by a wise man, if I take responsibility for crime going down, I have to take responsibility for crime going up, and so I'm not gonna do either. Um, we always anticipate crime to go down, we want crime to go, go down, but, you know, it just depends on certain circumstances around, and I guess how frisky kids feel if they want to get out and do stuff.
Well, logically, I mean, though, you, you'd think that this first, you know, October, November, December would typically see a somewhat of a little bit of a spike traditionally, I guess that's what I'm asking is, e- even though you've caught some of these and the numbers would potentially go down, they may not because of the time, the next quarter that comes up, is that?
Weather plays a part in, so if it's raining and cold, and they're not gonna, they're gonna stay at home and want to do this, stay at home, I mean, of course, but yeah, traditionally, the car thefts go up because people leave their cars running at night, um, around Christmas with presents, uh,
Right.
People do, you know, leave their cars unlocked, and people get into it that way, or they break into their houses, yes.
Well, and that's what I say in fairness to, to looking at numbers quarter to quarter, it's, you know, it depends on when you're looking at them, and I mean, you may have caught some of these individuals, or we have, and that's, you know, great, but that still may not, may not allow numbers to go down just because of the next quarter.
Right.
And I guess that's what I'm trying to get a true barometer of, for, you know, and in fairness to you guys, you know, you can't, you can't just assume that just because you caught some of them, now the numbers are gonna drop drastically, because it's the, the time is, you know, the season. This is typically a higher crime season, I guess is what I'm asking.
Yeah, it's, um, yeah, I, certain offenses correct, and certain offenses no, I mean, it's just, you can see it, I mean, you look at past trends, and it, and they go up and down, it just depends on who's out and what's going on, um, because it doesn't matter how, how aggressive you can be with police, that, you know, if Fort Worth gets real aggressive, they're gonna come to Houghton City, if Houghton City gets real aggressive, they'll go to, back to Fort Worth and Northerston Hills, is what we, we try to do, is push them to the other cities.
I'm sure they appreciate that also.
I, you know, I don't work for them.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Fowler, uh, Councilmember Gray.
Uh, Chief Phillips, you said that we're gonna have a rise in the aggravated assault, uh, due to the incident to that apartment?
Correct.
Was that, my understanding, was that a home invasion, or, or?
Is it, is a robbery.
Robbery, so wouldn't that come under the robbery stat, as opposed to the ag assault?
Yeah, but you have an ag assault because he shot a guy, the, the victim that they were robbing actually was not one of the ones injured. It was a witness, and then you have an ag assault on the peace officer for him pointing a gun at the officer.
Okay, so a lot of, a lot of numbers.
Yeah, that was, uh.
All right, thanks.
You know what we call that.
Are there any other questions or comments from the council for, uh, Chief Phillips? Seeing none, okay, fantastic presentation, thank you, sir, thanks for all you did. That is, that concludes our, our report, so it's now six fifty-five, we'll adjourn, and we'll reconvene into our regular session at, uh, seven o'clock. Our report, so it's now six fifty-five, we'll adjourn and we'll reconvene into our regular session at, uh, seven o'clock. Okay, council. Yeah, I wanna walk. Third, two thousand and seventeen city council meeting. The time now is seven oh seven. I'll give everybody a moment to sit down. Yes, sir, no, any, any time. First item on the agenda is the invocation of pledge of allegiance by Councilmember Trey Fowler, if you would, please stand.
Thank you, if you'd please bear your head. Our heavenly father, let us thank you for the beauty of the day that you've given us today. Let's be also thankful for the opportunity to be here and deliberate, discuss and make decisions that will move this town forward and, and hopefully. Be good for all the, not only the employees, but the residents and, and our community. I wanna thank you for all the employees that we have that do, do such a good job and are so diligent in what they do each and every day here for us and. I just wanna thank the, also the, the two members or the, I'm sorry, not the two members, but the two individuals that are running for city council. And the time that them and their families are willing to give to this community and we wanna wish both of them the best and. We hope, uh, that there's a very positive outcome. Ask all these things in your name, amen.
Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Intended to be public, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored the Texas flag. Our pledge allegiance to the Texas. One state, under God, one indivisible.
Thank you, Councilmember Fowler. Uh, moving right along to our announcements and events, our city secretary, Mr. Art Camacho.
Thank you, mayor. Announcements for October twenty-third, two thousand and seventeen in community projects, uh, in parks and recreation, registration for youth basketball. And little ballers ends November twenty-second. Little ballers is for kids four to six and the youth is for kids seven to fourteen. Coaches are still needed, so contact the rec center if you have any questions. Halton Halloween is Saturday, October twenty-eighth from two to five P M. at the Halton City Rec Center. Bounce houses, obstacle courses, face painting, crafts and more will be held. And the costume contest for ages two to ten begins at three thirty. Shannon High School is hosting a truck, trunk or treat event on Friday, October twenty-seventh. At sixty-ten Walker Street from four thirty to eight thirty. They will have a haunted house, face painting, a bounce house, a cakewalk, the Halton City Fire Department Smokehouse and much more. Concessions will be available and the admission is ten dollars or two for fifteen. You can call them at eight one seven, five four seven, five four zero zero for further information. Alton City Public Library, they have teen programs, family movie night, adult G E. classes. And other library activities are listed on the library's websites for their date and times. A pumpkin decorating contest will be held and the deadline is October twenty-fifth. The annual Howling Halloween will be held Monday, October thirtieth at six thirty P M. And the teen pumpkin smash will be held Wednesday, November first from five to seven P M. The crud cruiser, citizens will be able to properly dispose of their household hazardous waste on Saturday, October twenty-eighth. When the Fort Worth's crud cruiser comes to Halton City from nine to eleven A M. In the parking lot of the Halton City Public Library, which is at four oh eight, forty-eight oh nine, rather, Halton Road. You need proof of residency in Halton City will be required and this service is offered by the Environmental Collection Center. There is no cost for residents to use this service and for information on what products can be brought, please check the city website. The Northeast Recycles Day Flea Market is on Saturday, November fourth from eight A M. to two P M. At six oh five three Boulevard twenty-six, North Richmond Hills. There'll be a hundred vendors will be selling recycled and reused items at bargain prices. Free paper shredding will be held from nine A M. to twelve noon with a five file box maximum. And free household and electronic drops off, uh, no televisions. These twenty foot by twenty foot shelling spaces are twenty dollars, so call eight one seven, seven one five, seven zero six six to register. The Halton High School Fall Craft Fair is on Saturday, November fourth from nine A M. to four P M. It will include gifts, jewelry, nutritional supplemental drinks, crafts, home decor, health and beauty products. Candles, woodwork, quilts, clothing, food and much more. Proceeds will benefit the Halton Parent Teacher Students Association and s- provide scholarships to high school seniors. The Celebrate Texas Arbor Day will be on Friday, November third at one P M. When Keep Halton City Beautiful will be planting a tree and having a guest speaker. As well as serving light refreshments at the White Branch Park. Military veterans, after the ceremony, music entertainment, musical entertainment, bounce houses and food trucks will be on hand. We invite the community to come take part in this special day in Halton City. And also I'd like to add that the Halton City Board and Commission banquet will be held on Tuesday, November twenty-first. At the Diamond Oaks Country Club from six to nine P M. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Camacho, uh, city, thank you, city secretary Camacho, I apologize. Thank you for that, uh, if you're looking at your agenda, the, uh, reports, items number one, two and three, those were provided to, presented to us during the, uh. Their work session, so we'll be, uh, moving on past those, uh, the next item is our consent agenda consisting of items number four, five and six.
Mayor, I'd like to include, let everyone know, we did have a correction that was found in the minutes. Uh, on the October ninth, regular minutes, uh, we left out the name of Councilmember Grow and his voting on, uh, item number five.
Okay.
But that's been corrected.
Okay, with the correction, so we are in line for a motion on our consent agenda, again consisting of items number four, five and six. Councilmember, I'm sorry, Dr. Tong.
Man, council, I go ahead, make a move for, for item number four, minutes. Number five, animal advisory board, uh, committee amendment. And number five, number six, the order number oh dot two zero one seven, dot zero two zero dot fifteen.
Okay, thanks, so we have a motion for approval of the consent agenda. Uh, Councilmember Brown.
That's for a second.
Thank you, sir, we have a motion for approval in a second, are there any other questions or comments? Seeing none, if you would, please signify your votes. Motion passes unanimous with Councilmember Watkins being absent tonight. Uh, moving on to our regular agenda, agenda item number seven, Opticon GPS, uh, Chief Phillips. Was it Ms. Carver? Oh, Ms. Carver, Ms. Carver, welcome.
Good evening. Okay, this is for Opticon, uh. This is a system for both law enforcement and fire department, uh. When they approach lights that, that will change and this is, I believe, year two or three, uh, and we update those yearly. Uh, various amounts of signals, uh, four to five different signals.
And this is our second year or the third year?
Let me double check, I believe, we're in year.
Second year, okay.
Two, yeah.
Okay. Are there any other questions, uh, any questions from the council for Ms. Carver, uh, Councilmember Fowler?
Um, I don't know if it's for Ms. Carver, it may be, but is there any way to integrate this with the battery backup, Mr. Van Leeuwen, using the. That was proposed during the budget workshops? Or is this, is Opticon's completely separate from it?
I believe this allows the signals to still operate so that if, uh. Emergency services need to go through the intersection, they would be functioning, so the Opticon would work. If we didn't have the battery backup, then they would either be on flash or off, so the Opticon wouldn't work. But with the battery backup that was authorized in the budget too, which was also a multi-year project, the Opticon should still work.
Okay.
When the power goes off and the, and only the batteries are providing the intersection with power.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Fowler, are there any other questions from the council for, uh, either Ms. Carver or Chief Phillips? Okay. Okay, seeing none. Thank you, Ms., uh, Ms. Carver. Uh, seeing no other questions or comments, we're now in line for a motion. Uh, Councilmember Bro.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we, uh, purchase the Opticon GPS traffic control enforcement and signal preemption equipment.
Thank you, sir, we have a motion for approval, uh, Councilmember Nun.
That's for a second.
Thank you, ma'am, we have a motion for approval in a second, council, if you would, please signify your votes. Councilmember Brown. Oh, it's fine. You're, you're fine. Motion passes unanimous, thank you, council. Moving on to agenda item number eight, body camera, again, Ms. Carver and Chief Phillips.
And this one's for the purchase of eighty body worn cameras to be distributed to the police department. Uh, cost will be fifty-four thousand, four hundred and eight dollars, the budget amount was the same.
Okay. So this is in budget, okay.
Yeah.
Are there any questions, uh, Dr. Tong?
How many camera, I mean?
Eighty.
Eight?
Eighty.
Eighty?
Yes.
And, uh, I would like to ask you, are you, uh, that's okay. Is this a body camera recording individually or do you have central, you know, hard drive? Uh, like officer walking the field, everything recording, it go directly to the individual? Or do they go to a central office or something like this? You, you know what I mean, right? When the officer on the field.
Mm-hmm.
Everything recording, do, where do they store it? Right there on the body or what?
The, the device itself actually is a storage device and once that officer completes his shift and or is involved in an incident that needs to be documented. He can return to the station and it is docked in the docking device at the station or he can plug it in through a U S B. port. In the computer and it downloads and it's stored in the cloud. So we don't have a server to maintain or any of that.
That's mean we have no office to monitor what everything done on the field, right? Like no central office monitor what officer do in the field.
I'm confused.
Okay, when officer make the scene. No way you can know what happened out there, right? If there is a shooting or stabbing or something like this, you need to retrieve the hard drive. And download into your office or your computer, right?
Right, we can remotely view it if that's what you're asking, can I get logged on to the computer and watch what you're doing, no, we cannot.
Because my question, uh, is any city have the remote recording like the officer directly, you know? Remote, recording into the central office, we don't have that, right?
No, no, we have, what we're trying to do is integrate the body worn cameras into the in-car systems where they're all one system. And then that's all stored on, in the cloud, so you can access it. You can give a, a link to the district attorney's office or another police department that wants it, they can view it, so it's taken. Personnel cost out of making a D V. D. or managing, uh, server or something because it's all stored offsite.
Yeah, uh, one more last question. If the officer finishes duty, there ain't no incident or major, you know, problem? Do you still need that camera be loaded into your system?
Absolutely, all citizen contacts that fit within our policy will be recorded.
Thank you, chief, appreciate, Ms. Carver.
And it's also gonna, just to caveat, it's out of those eighty cameras, um, the vendor's giving us three extra cameras as. If any break, because it has a five-year warranty, because it's a, basically a five-year contract in that decision package. Um, we're gonna outfit animal control and code enforcement also with those, those cameras that, the remainder camera, cameras that we have. So everybody that basically deals with public that I'm over will have a camera system that'll be downloaded and maintained the same ways than officers.
Fantastic, thank you, sir, uh, thank you, uh, Councilmember Tong, uh, let's see, who is next, uh, Councilmember, uh. Grow and then Nun and Fowler.
So who's the contract with for the storage of the data?
The contract actually is Axon.
Axon?
Develop, developer of Taser.
And so, alright, so you said it was a five-year deal?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, years. Years.
Because some of this stuff has to be, you know, depending on the classification of the offense, we're talking about fifty-year, uh, storage costs.
There, the storage is, basically all we're paying for is the storage. The, the devices and all that is free. We're getting new cameras a year, is two and five, so to keep up with the current firmware and current technology.
Right, but, but because of, like, a felony, first degree felony conviction, that stuff has to be kept in storage for fifty years.
Correct.
Okay, so, so I guess what I'm trying to say is, I think we need to have a exit strategy on this, if, let's say we don't want to use Axon anymore, after five years.
The deal was...
So when you, when you're talking about twenty-seven terabytes of data, and it's probably gonna grow significantly over that five years, because as you store more and more, uh, data, you know, it goes, it just grows, and it doesn't go away.
With the Taser, if we go to the in-car systems also, which is what we're trying to work on, that's unlimited storage, which piggybacks on that. There's not a storage, if we decide at year five to go away from the Taser agreement or the Axon agreement, we don't have to pay for the additional storage, we've already paid for that storage, that, the, the, I guess the digital media that's already on that storage remains there, and so if we ever need it at year forty-nine, we just pay whatever the fee is to have them pull it back out from the cloud. There's not a maintenance for years five through forty-nine.
So they would, they would retain storage for fifty years, so...
It's just like Shutterfly or any of those stuff right now, you can put pictures on there and just leave them on.
Yeah, Shutterfly is a little different, because, um, they pretty much grab, grab your copyright, and so, so now they're the copyright holders, so now they own your picture.
Well, I was, I was just talking in general terms, I mean, they don't charge you to store the, the stuff once you...
No, because they took your copyright. So, so they own the picture, so they can license it and do whatever they want with it. So they're, that's a whole different medium, and the way that, all that is worked. So when you talk about storage that, for criminal offenses, that have to be maintained due to state requirements, um, it's just one of those things, I would just be curious, you know, somebody keeping, you know, if we're no longer contracted, contracting with them, and they're gonna keep it for another forty-five years, you know, I would just make sure that we understand, uh, what's entailed, if we don't decide to go with them anymore, we decide to contract out with a different cloud provider, or bring that, uh, data in-house.
And they've also, they've also stated that if we not comfortable with the exit strategy that they proposed, that we could actually get a server and then download that information prior to that year five ending, and then it wouldn't cost us anything to pull it back down. Um, most of our videos, right now we're operating around ten to twelve terabytes a year, and that's all our in-cars. So, um, we have a, well, they're, right now they'd be on two, two separate systems.
Yeah, but, but if you try to combine them, you know, you're talking...
That would be unlimited storage, so it didn't matter how much we had, we'd just dump it in there.
Well, okay, you still have transport costs, so you're not gonna be able to do it over the wire if you try to bring it, bring twenty-seven terabytes down. You know, year five, we don't go with Axon, you still have to get that data somehow.
Correct.
And so...
Well, we've been with L3 for fifteen years now, and so, I mean, it's, I see what you're saying, but we've looked at this for a long-term outlook, and our plan is to be with them longer than four or five years.
Okay.
So...
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Grow. Councilmember None.
Oh, thank you. I just, um, the body cameras will be, they be assigned to each officer, like he's responsible for this camera, or, or how does that work?
Yeah, each officer will be assigned a camera that's to them, it has their name on it, um, on the actual video, you probably seen on the news and all that, when it says whatever vendor it is, and it has the officer's last name, that's what it is. We found that actually issuing an officer or an individual the property, they maintain it a little better, and you can hold people accountable for when they break, as opposed to being a, a pool camera where everybody just comes and has a free fall, because they just miraculously get broken. Well, that was broke when I found it, type scenario.
Yeah, I agree definitely. So when they, when they're finished with their shift and they come in, do they then put it in, or do they take it home and put it in...
There's, there's two options. One's a docking station at the, there'll be one at the police department, one at code enforcement, one at animal control, where they put it in there at docks. It's done through the internet, it's encrypted through the docking station, sent up into the cloud. Um, or the second option's by USB, where they can plug it into their computer, anything with internet access, it's in, the device encrypts it, and then sends it up to the, the storage.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember None. Councilmember Fowler, do you have a question?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Carver, um, this may be since, for more of the city manager, or police chief one, what, at what point does it become relevant that, say, fire department, that this becomes a, I mean, since they're in somewhat in harm's way, is it, is there a point that this in the near future that that's gonna happen?
We've actually started demoing that also, we've, the old units that we've taken out, some of our in-car, we've actually just installed one in the new fire chief, or battalion chief truck, so they can start demoing the, the benefits of having an in-car camera system on. Problem with outfitting a firefighter with one of those is they've gotta be different situations, heat, where, where are they gonna be deployed, water, and stuff like that.
Well, I mean, is there, is that, is that, is that kind of the scuttlebutt, or is it not really being considered right now?
It's not being considered right now. I mean, we're, we're developing it for the, the fire trucks and the units to record when they, you know, initially get on scene, so they can come back and debrief on how they responded, and, you know, look at the different fires, and look at different tactics on how to attack it.
It would actually probably assist in, in the timekeeping, the timelines on arrivals and all that, but not necessarily. Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Fowler. Uh, Dr. Trong, did you have another question, or?
No.
No? Okay. Are there any other questions or comments from the council for Ms. Carver or Chief Phillips? Okay, seeing none. Thank you, Ms. Phillips. We are now in line for a motion. Councilmember Grow.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we purchase the Axon body cameras for the PD.
Thank you, Councilmember Grow. Councilmember Fowler?
That's for a second, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Councilmember None, do you have a question or a comment?
No, that was also for a second, thank you.
Okay. So we have a motion for approval and a second. Uh, council, if you would, please signify your votes. Motion passes unanimous. Fantastic, thank you, council. Uh, moving on to agenda item number eight, police department video surveillance grants. Again, Ms. Carver and Chief Phillips.
Okay. This one's for a grant for video surveillance equipment at a cost of twenty-nine thousand one hundred and eighty dollars, uh, which twenty-nine thousand three ninety-four was budgeted amount. Uh, and of course, the grant funds are a hundred percent reimbursable. And the camera system is, uh, for a range of activities to prevent and control various crimes.
Thank you, Ms. Carver. Uh, are there any questions from the council for Ms. Carver? Councilmember, Member Grow.
So is this gonna be one of those, like, mobile systems, that it's gonna be kinda like the, the speed indicator, so it goes up on a pole, and, and is, okay, so it's gonna be marked that it's a video camera, so people can see it, or, or you, say again?
It is not gonna be marked.
Okay, so it's gonna be, is there a tip ish?
Yes.
All right, very good.
Thank you, Councilmember Grow. Are there any other questions or comments, uh, from the council for Ms., either Ms. Carver or Chief Phillips? Seeing none, okay. Thank you both, thank you. Uh, we are now in line for a motion. Councilmember Fowler?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Move for approval of agenda item number nine, the police department surveillance video grant funding for the purchase of video surveillance equipment.
Thank you, sir. A motion for approval, uh, Councilmember None, and then Councilmember Grow.
Thank you, Mayor, that's for a second.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, Councilmember Grow, did you have a question or a comment?
Nope, did on a second.
So we have a motion for approval and a second. Uh, if you would, please signify your votes. Uh, try. Okeydoke. Motion passes unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, council. Uh, moving on to agenda item number ten, notice of intent to issue C certificates of obligation. Uh, Ms. Fung, welcome back.
Mayor and the city council, this is a resolution to publish the notice of intent to issue two thousand eighteen certificates of obligation. When we are developing the current year's budget, the council approved the Fathom Advanced Meter Infrastructure Project, and this project will replace all water meters and install radio read mechanism to monitor water usage. And this project will cost, um, more than eight million dollars. So with this, uh, resolution, um, the city is in the process of issuing the two thousand eighteen certificate of obligation with an amount of about seven million dollars. And, uh, staff recommend the city council to approve the resolution, authorizing and approving the publication of notice of intent to issue the two thousand eighteen certificate of obligation. Tonight, we also have, uh, Mr. Mark McClany, uh, our municipal advisor, um, he's with Semco Capital Markets, uh, with us, so, uh, if you have any questions, and he can answer the questions.
Thank you, Ms. Fung. Are there any questions or comments from the council for either Ms. Fung or Mr. McClany? Uh, Councilmember Fowler?
I have a question for Mr. McClany.
Yes, sir, Mr. McClany.
If you would, just for the viewing audience's, uh, opportunity, explain the difference between certificates of obligation and, and GOs. If you just, it's, you hear it a lot, and I like to always try to, you know, help educate, because it makes it better understanding for the viewing audience.
A general obligation bond is a voted obligation that the council authorizes an election, and it goes to the voters, and it's a yes or no question. A certificate of obligation is, a city council takes an action on a resolution, giving the citizens notice of intent that they intend to borrow a certain amount for certain projects listed in that resolution. It allows the citizens an opportunity to petition the certificates of obligation to take it to an election. If five percent of the qualified voters petition the city council prior to the action, the ordinance authorizing the certificates of obligation, the certificates of obligations are not issued, and it goes straight to a bond election. And that's the difference. The credit is exactly the same. It's full faith and credit of the city, supported by ad valorem taxes. For general obligation bonds, for, for certificates of obligation, it's tax credit, full faith and credit, plus a utility system pledge.
It was typically on the utility system.
Very often, yes, sir.
Okay. And then, um, the, uh, which is infrequent to ever have anyone come with the, the five percent vote typically.
Uh, it, it does happen from time to time, but it is infrequent.
Okay. And then, um, I think that's all I had. I appreciate the explanation, though, that helps.
Okay, my pleasure.
Thank you, Mr. McClany.
Thank you, Councilmember Fowler, and thank you, Mr. McClany. Uh, are there any other questions or comments from the council for either, uh, Ms. Fung or Mr. McClany? Seeing none, okay. Excellent presentation, excellent explanation. We are now in line for a motion. Dr. Trong?
Man, Council, I go ahead, make a move for approval of resolution number two zero one seven dot two, I mean, zero two nine dot oh three. Uh, the, on the certificate, certificate of obligation.
Thank you, sir. A motion for approval. Councilmember Fowler, was your light still on, or did you just not turn it on?
Well, I just had one other quick question on Dr. Trong's, though, I'll, I'll second it, if it's, we're at that point.
We, we are.
Okay, I'll second the motion, but also, one other thing, Mr. McClany, that, the debt that's issued would fall under our INS or, or our debt service.
It will be a budgeted item, it'll be supported by the utility system, so it won't be, if the city council authorizes it in, on December eleventh, it's a combination tax and revenue, certificate of obligation. If the utility system has the revenues to generate, if, if you budget the money, it'll be paid for out of the utility system. If, for whatever reason, the money's not in the utility system, then the fallback position is the ad valorem, which is the INS tax rate.
Okay.
It's anticipated that this is to be supported by the utility system.
It should self-support.
Yes, it's self-supporting, exactly.
All right, okay, thank you. I still have a second, Mayor.
Okay. That answers your question?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we do have a motion and a second, so council, if you have any, if you don't have any other questions or comments, uh, please signify your votes. Motion passes unanimous, thank you. And thank you, Mr. McClany, for making the, the trip up here.
My pleasure.
Uh, moving on, this, to the now, now, moving on to the visitors and citizens forum, for anyone in the audience wishing to speak before the council tonight. Okay, seeing none. Moving on to the boards and commissions, I didn't see that we had any resignations. None? Okay. Uh, moving on to appointments or reappointments. Uh, Councilmember None.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to reappoint Wayne Clowers to the beautification, um, board.
Okay, Wayne Clowers.
And I would also like to, um, tonight, I would like to reappoint Betty Bronstadt to the library board.
Been on there for a long time.
And I would also like to, um, uh, reappoint Dorothy Tyler to the CCPD red light.
Okay.
That's all for tonight, thank you.
Did everyone get that? Wayne Clowers to the beautification board, Betty Bronstadt to the library board, and, uh, Dorothy Tyler to the CCPD, okay? Okay, if you would, please ratify with your votes. Okay, there we go, reappointed. Moving on to agenda item number thirteen, yes, sir, Mr. Fowler?
Um, quick question, Mayor. One of the things that was added, uh, was, I had a question, and I think Councilmember Brown, um, had, had, uh, kinda updated me a little bit, but on the committee, the potential, we looked at next meeting, is that one we're talking about discussing, the bond review potential committee?
First meeting in November.
First one.
Yeah. Uh, did we wanna wait until Councilmember Fowler was, not Fowler, you're Fowler, Councilmember Watkins is here to have some input on this, or did we want...
Oh, no, that's fine, I just wanted to make sure, but it's, it's scheduled for that.
The first meeting in November, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, yes.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, no problem, no problem. Uh, moving on to excuse absences of Councilmember Watkins. Councilmember Fowler?
I move a excuse for, uh, medical purposes, uh, and like to also, if it's, I'm, I'm not aware, but it sounded like Ms. Watkins, uh, which is a former council member and mayor, uh, is having some illness, so we would like to wish her and send her a speedy recovery.
Absolutely, definitely keep her in our thoughts and prayers. So, uh, the motion has been made to excuse the, uh, absence of Councilmember Watkins. Would please signify with your votes. Motion passes, thank you, council. And seeing we have no other business to, uh, to handle, we will adjourn at seven forty. Motion passes. Thank you, council. And seeing we have no other business to, uh, to handle, we will adjourn at seven forty.